So, there was an error made in the warning for this meeting. So I want you to know that this is not an official hearing for the charter changes. So, we know that people have made efforts to come out tonight, so we're going to take comments. But please, please recognize this is not part of the public hearing and we're going to have to declare another public hearing. So, just so you know. So, we'd be happy, there are copies on the chair.
For Dexter Rennie.
Dexter Rennie, if anyone wants a copy. Does anyone here need a copy?
Sir, Dexter Rennie. Can I have your name?
My first name is spelled N-I-A-L, and my last name is R-E-L-E.
It's easier to spell than it sounds.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
I said it's easier to spell than it sounds.
Absolutely.
So, I want to make this process as easy as possible and as cohesive as possible. So, I'm assuming Mel will come back. Mel Hawley has entered into, for all of us, what his recommended changes are, and I think those are there too, right, Joan?
No, that's just the proposal.
Okay.
That was submitted.
All right. So, we'll let Mel speak to his own suggestions before we get back. Well, how I'd like to do this is unless somebody objects, I'd like to keep to the, as we go down through your comments, only on the parts that we're talking about. So, 15A-01, 101. Everybody has a copy, so I don't think I need to read it, but if you have any comments on that one, I'd like to keep the comments to where we are in the page so that we're all at the same time talking about the same thing. So, does anyone have any comments on the A, 15A-101?
I know Mel had a number of comments, probably not it's, he's not here, so we want to just, unless anybody else wants to talk about it now, we could skip that one and come back to the one he gets here.
I have a copy of Mel's.
I have all of his, I just mean, he may want to mention why he's, and I can explain why, why I left that in there.
And just for simplicity also, he's recommended or suggested strongly, and I did look it up, we are considered counselors, not councilmen or councilpersons. So if we all can agree that that one change could be done throughout the document without having to mention it every time, that would be great too.
I was going to ask him if there was a legal reason for it.
I looked it up, and it's, so, all right. So, if Mel gets here, we'll come back to his suggestion, but let's move on to B. Does anyone have any?
Nope.
There he is, so let's wait. For A.
I'm just using your name in vain, Mel.
So Malva is a quick catcher-upper. We're going to go section by section, and we've all agreed that we're changing councilperson to counselor throughout, so we don't need to keep mentioning that. So we're on, we were just going to B, but if you'd like to comment on Section 101A and the copy that you've sent us, you've got most of it crossed out.
Sure. The, I'm not sure, you know, probably some people in the room know about the discrepancy in the city's town lines, and there's some people that are here that don't even know what I'm talking about, but if you take the existing charter that makes reference to a city that's 400 rods by 480 rods, if you do the math, it equals exactly 1,200 acres. However, if you actually take a look at the parcel maps of the city, as to what the city is claiming or taxing, let's say, it equals about 1,660, so 1,660 acres. So, we're not talking about a discrepancy of 30 acres here, we're talking about a discrepancy of an excess of 25 percent. The town of Ferrisburg has, they've never brought any formal challenge to this, and I just think that if you're going to submit a charter to the legislature, then why don't you deal with this thing once and for all? You know, I don't know how many years ago, you know, Ken DeGruy and I spent a lot of time, because the statute makes reference to, you know, if there is some question about a town line, in essence, you can't paraphrase it a little bit. If you really can't find the corners, then evidence that's been in existence for over 100 years shall deem the charter law. And Ken DeGruy and I did a lot of research to just try to make sure that this wasn't like creep, it wasn't like town line creep that occurred over, you know, 200 years, but it was, in essence, I'm going to say from day one. Now, the charter makes reference to states and stones, and Ken DeGruy actually went out and tried to find the state and stones just to see if they were there, and he just, maybe they were there at some point, but he couldn't, couldn't find them. So, anyway, the way that Ken and I, one of the things that Ken and I clearly concluded was that in Vermont, property taxes started in the 1850s or 1860s, and that would have been a very helpful determining factor as to particularly those pieces of property that are in two towns, like for instance, on Meg's Road, the DR Power Plant, that's a piece of property that's in two towns. And we went back and we discovered where it was crystal clear that Ferrisburg was taxing 11 acres and Vergen was taxing 14. So, anyway, so my point is, is I really think that the city council, in this regard, I think it's important to just slow down and get these town lines correct, I'll say, once and for all. And instead of avoiding it, I'm saying, prepare a map, have the map reflect what, how the city has treated the town lines for the last probably 200 years, and submit it to the legislature, and be done with this cloud hanging over the, hanging over the city. Now, I fully understand that the city, I think that based on my watching of city council meetings, that you're, there seems to be, correct me if I'm wrong, but I feel as if the city council is trying to hold two public hearings and have a vote on this charter in March. And I'm just going to suggest to you that, that you abandon that schedule. For this reason, and a number of other reasons.
Well, that's exactly the reason that I left that language in, is because I didn't want to have it held up in Montpelier. I thought, well, we've got towns around us who might fight it, and this language is already there. We've been trying to push this charter, ever since I've been on the council, there's been talk about, we need to change the charter. And it probably was, been talked about that for 20 years before that, and, and this is also going on at the school board, so I got, yeah. It drives me crazy when we start getting forward, moving forward, and then somebody's like, oh, we need to hold off again. And the timing we have here, and this is a lot slower than I had hoped, I had wanted to have these meetings months ago and kept getting pushed off, pushed off. And so we are coming up against it, but the timing works just because of the way the votes are laid out. We can do town meeting in March, and then we can have it go to the legislative committees right away, and then we have our, the main vote in November where we have a large turnout. It's going to be one of the larger turnouts, I'd rather have it on a time when people are going to come to the ballots than in an off year. That said, I completely understand, and I hate the fact that these lines are not identifiable, and I really would like to have it set, and so I, this is up for discussion. The reason I left it there was to kind of, the reason for these meetings is to talk to the city and say, is this something that you want to do? And if you do, that's how we'll do it. If you don't, that's, you know, there's three or four things that people have commented to me, and I said, that's, I didn't want to make the decision for people, I want to raise these issues and say, what do you think as a city, whatever our residents want to do, and we'll go along. So if it seems like we really want to know where our boundaries are, then we can do that.
So, Lynn, one of the things, the way that I understand this proposal is being made is a complete substitution of the charter. This is the way that, the way that I read what was posted on the website, it makes reference to repealing, in essence, there's three sections of repeal, repealing the general procedures, repealing the traffic court, repealing the water system. So this thing is being proposed to do a complete repeal of your existing charter and do a total replacement of what you are proposing. And so, in this instance, relative to the boundaries of the city, I understand that it's the same language, I understand that it's the same language, but because you are proposing to make a change, it really is going to be regarded by the legislature and regarded by the town of Ferrisburg potentially, that this is new language. I understand it's the same, all right, but, but really, the way that you're presenting it, it's, it's not a change. Let me, you know, I know you're stuck on, I know you're stuck on number one, but I, before you go too much further, I really don't think that the city has followed the legal procedures required of itself for the process. If this, if this is believed to be the city council's first formal public hearing, it's proposed.
It's not.
Okay, so you've already made an announcement of that?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so, sorry.
This is, we didn't want, people, we knew people were coming, so we, this is an informal comment period. There will be two public hearings that will be properly warned, and we're going to invite everybody back, but because of everybody's effort to get out tonight, we thought we'd address anything that we might see as a problem and see if we can address it before the public hearing, perhaps change something. My only comment, and I understand exactly where you're coming from, but I think the other part of that is, is the cost of fighting Ferrisburg, doing the survey of the town of where, you know, where this all says it is, would be, I would think, a horribly high cost. And does it, does it make sense to take that on at that cost and with that responsibility for this? I'm not, I'm asking that as a question. Because I would think you'd need to do both.
I have no idea what it would cost to put four stakes in the ground. I mean, really, you know, I don't, I don't know exactly what is, what is involved, other than, when I say putting four stakes in the ground.
Yeah, I know.
I think, I think it really might be six, because you might need one on both sides of the river, you know, on the west hand side of the city, but I can tell you, you know, on the eastern side of the city, there's two corners, you know, so really, you only need four corners. And I will tell you that if you look at your, if you look at your parcel maps around here, and you'll, you'll notice that it really, the 1,660 acres that I'm talking about, that is not some perfect rectangle. I mean, the lines actually kind of jog around and whatever. You know, so I think that cost of doing a survey depends on what your goal is. If your goal is to try to absolutely determine what has been treated as the town line for over 100 years, and try to recreate those lines in the form of a survey, get your wallet out, okay? Because that, that would be a tremendous amount of research, both in the vault and out in the field, all right? But if it can be done by simply putting four posts in the ground, you know, that most closely resemble the corners that the city has been using from a taxation standpoint, I think that this could be simple. So I don't know, I don't know whether or not this is a big deal or, or a little deal, but I, I just feel that, you know, why not fix it once and for all? And I realize that if it, I realize that that may mean not having a vote on this in March, I understand that, but I just think to, to not do it now, it just doesn't make any sense to me.
Now, what maps are you referring to that show the 16,060 acres?
If you were to just simply, if you were to just run, because every parcel, every parcel is in the grand list.
Right.
Except for, except for the river and the city rights away. And I could run a, Joan and I could run a total of parcel size in two seconds.
Are you referring to the tax maps?
Yeah.
You referring to the tax maps?
Yeah.
That you prepared?
Yeah.
How long ago?
Well, I did it over a four-year period. I mean, I did them, and then they were digitized by somebody else, by some other firm, but I did it in the mid-'80s, let's just say.
And that digitization shows the 16,060.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah.
And, so where did those boundaries come from that you used to create that map? Where did you start?
Well, I used, I used information that I, that I did have in the form of surveys, for instance, Booth Woods down in the lower right-hand corner, there is, if you look at that survey that's on file at City Hall, it makes reference to the town line. If you look at the, if you look at the survey of the water tower property, that shows. If you look at the high schools property, you know, it, you know, so.
So it's like putting together a puzzle.
There's, oh yeah, there's, there's lots of information, there's lots of surveys on file that show the historic, if you will, boundaries of the city.
But you're not a tax map preparer professional?
No.
And that's why they, they aren't what they are, essentially?
I don't take offense by that.
No, no, I mean, it's.
I tell you, my research, from a tax, from a tax mapping standpoint, the Sabre Gens, I put my research about any licensed so-called tax, tax mapper out there, okay? But that's okay, all right?
No.
I know what, I know what I did to do them.
Yeah. No, I just, I want everyone to understand where those, where that 16,000 came from. Okay, so that's, I'm just.
Let me tell you something. When, when I first did this, I, I didn't like take the charter and go off and, and say, okay, where's, where's this 400 by 480, that's not how I did it. I just simply started tracing ortho photos, that's all I did, all right? And then when I, we, we got all done, and we, it got, then at some point, it got digitized. I remember I had to do a last map and a half in a race, because there was a state program that was going to digitize your map.
I remember that.
So Joan and I said, listen, we got to get this, we got to get this thing done. And so, the last one and a half on the inner side, inner, in, about the center of the city, were done much more hastily than the rest of the city. But anyway, but it was, when it got done, when it got done, the company, the companies, you know, gave us a printout, parcel, a parcel 260, it was X number size, and it, and it had the total, and it said 1,660, and I'm thinking, oh damn, oh, and I remember going to Joan and saying, man, something is goofier. And then I did some more research, the city actually was created in three pieces, you know, one from Ferrisburg, one from New Haven, you know, which Walton came from New Haven as well. Like, for instance, this thing makes reference to the corner of New Haven, if you're going, if you were going to change that, you shouldn't say New Haven, you should say Walton, you should say Walton, because Walton came out of New Haven later. So anyway, at one point, I thought it was like the curvature of the lens, I tried to come up with, how the hell could you be 25 percent off? But, but trust me, that's what you're.
Yeah, if you're 3 percent off, that'd be one, 25 is.
25, it's over 25 off, so, anyway.
All right, we'll put that on a agenda for a discussion amongst the council. Rennie, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Well, I'd like to throw out something that probably will make no sense, but I'll throw it out anyhow. I don't know whether Vermont is an adverse possession state. And, and I don't know whether in fact governments qualify for adverse possession, but if we are an adverse possession state and governments qualified for adverse possession, this is moot, because we already own it. So, so that, I think we should check into that before we do anything relative to the expense of surveying and so on, because we may automatically own it just because we have claimed it. And so, that's just my suggestion to that.
So, it's, it's not about the city owning anything, I mean, people own their own property, it's not like the city owns. And relative to adverse possession, the statute makes reference to if there, when there is a discrepancy of a town line, evidence of more than 100 years shall establish the line. That, in essence, Rennie, is your adverse possession statute. It's not a typical adverse possession, about 15 years and all that type of thing, but the, the, there is, there is no doubt, and there's no doubt in my mind, I was never worried about, about Ferrisburg trying to claim something, because, you know, Ken DeGruy and I proved the over 100 years thing, and went back to 1866, or whenever property taxes started in Vermont, so that's never, that's not an issue.
Okay. Let's stop that discussion, move on to B.
B?
B, on 101.
Selective, it's selective, that makes sense.
We're fine with that change. Does anybody else have any comments on number B? Onto 102, powers of the city. Any comment from anybody? None? And if you, remember, after you look at this and you come back to the public hearing, if you've read this over and there is a, that this isn't, you know, we're not holding you in stone here. 105, power over water resources.
Are you taking them on A and B, or are you just taking them?
Yeah, and A first.
Okay. I didn't make any changes to A. I, you know, I did understand this came out of the city Winuski's charter, which they have a river flowing through it too, and there's water rights. Has, has this, has this proposed charter been reviewed by the city attorney?
No.
Okay. So, so, let me just make a general comment that I think that any charter change the city is proposing ought to be reviewed by the city attorney. That's just my feeling, just a general feeling. This particular section, on the one hand, I like it, I think that, I think that the city council having some, some level of authority over the river, you know, I understand that, you know, all right? But I can tell you, I don't know what you're getting into in practice, because water power is really regulated by the federal government and the state. So I'm a little, I'm, I'm a little concerned with what this might be putting the city into. And believe me, I think it's important that the falls, you know, be protected and whatever, and I can remember when the various licenses were granted to Green Mountain Power and the aesthetics, and the city was a party. There's a difference to the city being a party, to an application to the feds, as opposed to having approval of the city council. So I just, I have mixed feelings about what you're walking into.
So that's a new piece?
Yeah. So, I can underline approval of the city council and check the legality, does that seem like a fair?
Any other comments on A? All right, we're on to 201, city meetings. That's a statute really, isn't it? When it's got a B, so that's qualified voters. So let's start with A.
Well, actually, before we get into that, I can give an explanation, because both Rennie and Mel have the same thing, and I'll say, the only reason the non-resident language is in here is because it's a topic around the state. And I thought, I wasn't going to, but I thought, well, it's not really my call to decide whether or not to go in there, if this seems like it's something that's bubbling up, we'll put it out, we get public comment, we have a public discussion. If there's little to no interest in doing that, then we take it up, and if the public says, this really is something we want to be behind, that's the reason for the public hearings. So I'm not, I didn't throw this in because I thought, yes, this is it, I just, seemed like this was the time to have this discussion.
And that's what we agreed to when we first saw this document, too.
Yes, Mel?
So, let me just tell you, if I read this thing correctly, kind of, just kind of setting aside for a moment, the argument about whether non-citizens should be on a, a city voter checklist, that's what I, that's the way I understand it, all right? I am not at all wild about the Vergen City Clerk's office having to maintain two checklists. So, I just, I would cast it away, and if, and if the, and if the legislature decides that, that, that in all elections, I'm not sure how the legislature's going to try to, you know, if the legislature imposes two checklists on you, because they could do that, because I can tell you, I don't know that the legislature can, I'm not sure if the legislature can dictate who votes in a federal election, but anyway, let me just tell you, I'm not wild about Joan or the clerk's office having to have two checklists, so I would cast it away, and whatever the legislature does, that's what they do.
I, I, I'll make a comment, I just think that, you know, I know Montpelier has done this, and they, you know, are estimating less than actually 12 people in the city of Montpelier who are eligible, who are illegal resident, non-citizen, burling from digit passes, they have a little more of a heavy lift. So I just, I think, you know, when we're talking about extending the vote and representation, you know, I, I want to make sure we're not just thinking about an administrative task when it's someone's voice in their local government.
And I struck that out in my recommendations, my reasoning is purely, I think it's a privilege that you acquire when you become a citizen of the United States, and that no one else, unless they are a citizen, should be able to vote, pure and simple.
I don't miss others for that. Any other comments on that? Yes?
Are legal residents taxed on their income if they're legally earning?
Yes.
So, what's the status of, I guess, somebody incarcerated or under some kind of judicial restriction on their voting rights today?
Well, felony.
You're still paying taxes.
You can't vote.
They can vote in Vermont.
Oh, they can?
You can, you can vote if you're in prison.
Other states they can, but there's like six states they can.
Oh, I didn't, I thought it was I.
One, but.
So are there other categories of people who are, I guess, restricted in their voting rights?
No.
Not in Vermont, I guess.
As a U.S. citizen.
Well, an age.
Yeah, an age.
I'd love to share some thoughts. Okay. So, firstly, to be here in the first place, I, I'm one of those people who is a non-citizen resident, tax-free and property owner here in the city of the Gens, and proud to be. And when I did see this come up in local news in Vermont, I was excited, because I spent the last, basically all my adulthood in the U.S., and certainly identify a lot more with this country than my country of origin in a lot of ways, I grew up in India, and I think that it's a, it's a, it's a possibility, and it is an opportunity, to make a strong statement, that, that people should have the opportunity extended to them, to have the ability to exercise some civic duty in the place that they live, in the place that they are taxed. There are reasons we're not able to vote in, in federal, and to certain extent, in state elections, it was codified in '96, not all that long ago, and it was really in the '20s that, that non-citizens was stripped of the right to vote in local elections, also in the history of the country not all that long ago. And up till the '20s, when legislation changed around these laws, not the judiciary, it was in fact upheld by the Supreme Court several times. So, the fundamental notion of this being a privilege just awarded to a citizen doesn't really stand on much ground when you look at the whole. really stand on much ground when you look at the whole history of the country. And I, for one, you know, I recognize that perhaps, I looked up the numbers from the census, it's fewer than half a percent of Virgin's residents are non-citizens. Of that group, how many are eligible to vote, are of age, I do not know. Well, none of them are eligible to vote, of course, but would be if, if they are of age, I do not know. I'm certainly, would love for this to be a significant conversation. I would love to be a part of that conversation, and that's why I recommend that this move forward. I have participated as I believe, you know, good upstanding citizens should in civic life to a big extent. I'm, I'm on the board of the library here in town, I'm the board of the United Way of Addison County, I support different ventures in various different ways with my tax dollars for sure, but also with, with my time and with my philanthropy. So I do, I do believe that I'm a contributing member of this community and would love to have a say in, in local elections.
Well, we invite you to come back to the public hearing, so more people can hear you. Yes?
Also, to, to even support citizenship may, may be a larger, complicated issue, but I think community is a simpler issue. And I think that if there are members of our community who are otherwise, fitting all the things we're talking about here, right? You know, taxpaying members, upstanding members of the community, they're legal, they're just not citizens, but to me, a member of our community should have a voice. And even, it sounds like we're not even talking about that many people, so maybe it is more of a matter of principle than it is practical, but I think it, it pays to stand up principle. And if we're saying, hey, we're a community, we have members of our community who are here, I think they should have a voice.
Thank you.
This is kind of an aside, raises a question about, this is going to be presented as a poll, and it will be either voted up or down as a poll.
That's practice.
It's quite the risk.
That, yeah, that, I don't know, there probably is not any other way to do it, but that's, that's like crazy land. Because if I don't like that one article, I dump the whole thing, and I don't have any way of saying, you don't have any way of assessing the voter sense of the different sections. And I realize there's probably no other way to do it, but.
There isn't, and that's why we have a public hearing, and hopefully, the council will use their best judgment after the hearings.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the general idea. Now, say, for this, it's similar to deciding about the land map, is if, if there's significant support within the community to do this, and we put this in, there's a really good chance that Montpelier pushes it aside, and we don't get that step of this process. So this is.
Would you mind repeating that?
We have to have, so we have to go through the public hearings, and then we put this to a vote of the residents of Virgin to say, yes, we like this. Then it goes to Montpelier to say, yes, we like this. And then it comes back to us to say, yes, we want to implement this. Montpelier can shut it down, and they do quite often. So if they don't like something in here, they can just not do anything until the session runs, and then we have to wait until the next session starts to start it all over again. So some of this is just playing kind of a political game. What do we put in there that we think, or do we want to say, there are a lot of communities out there doing this, maybe this helps Montpelier say, well, you know, this seems to be a big push, and we're one more voice in that. So it's trying to balance what we want and what we need and what the timing is. If we want to go and say we want these clear, defined lines of our boundaries, chances are Ferrisburg or Penn may say, we're not really excited about how you're drawing that line, and we're going to challenge that. And if there's a challenge, Montpelier's not going to pass it, because they're just going to say, there's something outstanding you need to fix before we'll do this. So this is kind of a balancing.
Do they have a line item veto, or section item veto, veto? It's, with them, it's the same thing, up or down?
I think that they can edit it, and that's why it comes back to us to vote.
Is edited.
So they can, they can make changes, and then that's why we have that later vote to say, okay, do we agree with what they've done to it? Or if they completely screwed it up, we're like, this is not what we sent you.
Okay.
Okay, so C and D will only go if the other one goes. So unless someone has an immediate comment on that, I'm going to skip over to, well, define what a legal citizen is, that might want to, somebody might want to comment on that, but it's, if one doesn't go, the rest won't go, so. All right, so 203, special meetings. I think that's pretty much the way it is anyway, correct? Joan? The 5%?
Yes.
Okay. Reconsideration and rescission? Nominations in general. Any comment? Mm-hmm.
Is that the correct spelling of rescission?
I don't know.
It doesn't look right.
It doesn't look right, but I don't know, I don't know if it's wrong. We'll check that.
This is why we have extra eyes. And 205, I like Mel's clarification for specificity.
Go back to 204.
Okay, sorry.
I know I didn't make any change there. I only do math, and I don't do spelling. Wasn't there a time where the city had some vote that a, that a reconsideration petition required 10% or something? All right, so, sorry, I didn't bring that up on, I didn't know if I needed to bring it up under 203 or 204, but anyway, I'm just concerned that.
I've forgotten that.
Yeah, but I thought that might be, and I didn't look this up, so I thought, provided by general law.
Well, the thing is, if, if the way, if, if this charter gets put into place effective such and such date, and the general law says five, it's five, unless the town votes that it's 10, so I think you just, you just need to sort that out.
Yeah, we did that.
I, I know somebody. I'm surprised Cheryl's not here. I have to see Cheryl, actually, at the grocery store on occasion, and I really brought that up on her behalf. Because her husband's not really looking out for her.
And according to Google, that is the correct spelling of rescission.
Okay, 205, nominations in general. Again, we've agreed to councillor.
Is the law changed?
Yeah, and I, because I had a question on that.
In 205, any number of voters may sign the same petition, meaning if there are eight people running for three alderman seats, they can sign all eight petitions.
So that's new.
Yep, that's brand new.
And the first part of it, is that, is that the current practice, the first sentence about the?
Thirty to forty days.
How many days in 40 days?
Well, Mel had written, not later than 5:00 P.M. on the sixth Monday before the annual meeting, which I think makes a lot clearer than, not, less than 30 and not more than 40.
No, it's not, there is a, there's a difference.
I know, I mean, I think that there's, there's clarification there, there's this very specific amendment.
Is that, was that out of the state law, Mel?
Yeah, and I, let me, yeah, when I first read, when I first read that, I thought, man, I don't, I don't think it's 30 days and not more than 40. I think, I don't think that there's, you know, at least 30, more than 40, I think there's another law. Anyway, my, one of the, I, I, all that I did was, I, you know, I typed in what the law says. But I would like the city council to consider taking a look at the city of Montpelier's charter as it relates to elections. So as a general comment, let me tell you my concern. Elections are hard enough for Joan, for the clerk's office.
Yeah.
To follow the state law. And the current charter is really kind of silent about, about election process, this whole thing about petitions and when you file nominee elections and blah, blah, blah. And because it's silent, the clerk's office relies on state law. So I can tell you, the city of Montpelier, they actually refer to the state law, and so you don't have to have the clerk's office go into the state law and then double-check in the charter, and sometimes it's not the same. And so I just want to throw out the idea that relative to this whole election process, that you consider the city of Montpelier's charter, and I think that would make it simpler on the clerk's office.
Okay, I have all the papers, so.
Thank you. Any other comment on that one? Moving on to 206. It's just some clerical things that Mel found. Is there any other comment about the article itself?
Yeah, I, I had a question mark about it, in that this, resigning 15 days before, and I guess if there's a council person who, who is, wanted to run for, say, the, the mayor was out of office, deputy mayor was in office, and so this is the election where you're going to elect another mayor for the remaining term. So if it's just a council member who wants to run for mayor, I can see them resigning 15 days ahead of the election time, or petition time, I'm not sure which, which one. But if it happens to be the deputy mayor who wants to run for mayor, then you've got a 15-day gap of nobody running, nobody being mayor, because they're resigning before the end. And it seems like, I mean, the way we do it now, I mean, if, if anybody's interested in running for that position, you just file your petition, and when it comes election day, you're on the ballot, period, you know? And you, and if you get it, you get the position, then you resign. So I, I think this just kind of makes it a little complicated, that's the only.
Mel?
So the, the changes that I put in here was just to try to make this thing be a little bit more consistent, because I couldn't follow it the way that it was originally written. Having said that, let me just tell you, I, I could live with blowing this whole section out, totally blow it away, really. But if you, if there is some concern, let me just, let's just say, right now you have a ma, everybody has a two-year term, and so you have a mayor and you have six city council members. Three of them have, they, their terms expire, three of them expire odd years, three of them expire even years. You certainly wouldn't want, you, you really would not want a system where three of the aldermen run for a two-year slot when they have a year left anyway. Okay? Because let's, let's say, you know, that this coming March, the, there's three of you, that you're, there's three of you sitting here whose terms don't expire until the following year. You, you wouldn't want to allow three sitting city council members to have a two-year seat, to run for a two-year seat, and then they get elected, and so now they have kind of like two seats, but they can't hold two seats, but you take the longer one, and now those three people can appoint three people to fit on the board. So I fully understand the problem of three, of, of sitting city council members not being able to run for, whose terms haven't expired, run for another seat, all right? I, I certainly would prohibit that. Having said that, I don't, I think that anybody, sit, any city, any alderman to be called city councillor, I think that any of them should be able to run for mayor. I don't, I don't think that only the three whose terms expire in a, due to expire in an even year can, can run, and the other three have to resign to run. I don't agree with that at all.
I would have had to resign to run. I would have had to resign to run.
I don't agree with that at all.
I agree with you on that.
So, in line with the thoughts that you just shared about the, the three sort of infinite council members, then, if somebody runs for mayor, how is the councillor position filled then? So that's the same problem, then, actually, in some way?
The one spot, yeah.
What if, what if we then change the language, and then you'd have to have a special election, huh? So that it wasn't an appointment, but it wasn't elected to position to fill the?
Yeah, having money to have an election, what does that have an election?
Right.
Yeah, I think, I, I understand the, the problem. I think if you want to be mayor, then you probably should step down, so that you're letting somebody else run in that spot, and you're rolling the dice of, well, if I don't get elected mayor, then I've lost my seat, but if I do, I don't want to leave an empty seat that now has to be filled for the entire year.
But after Mike, Mike didn't run again, nobody wanted to be mayor.
I think it's, it's, and this is, this is one of the things, again, where it's sort of new language, and it's, we'll debate this in public and figure out what, what seems to make sense. And there's going to be a number of these things coming in the pages where I think people, when they first read it, said, what are you thinking? It's like, I'm not really, I'm just throwing out a possibility, and you tell me if you want it or not. So, you know, there's, there's pluses and minuses on, on doing something of this nature, but it also can be a pain to, for the council to have to then try and figure, figure out how to fill seats or not fill seats. But definitely worth considering and working on further.
Any other thoughts? Moving on to voting machines. Guess we're all set. 301, A. Hearing no comments, B. I guess I would ask this question just as clarification. So if a qualified voter happens to be our new friend here, does he get to run for mayor?
According to. Yeah, according to. The change.
No plan for it.
Yes, I think in the language that we currently have it written in 202, that would be a possibility.
Okay, C.
C, yes. I submitted some language, but really, I said, it's not necessarily the appropriate language, I just put in what is in the current charter.
Correct.
But my, my intent was that I didn't think we needed to go to three-year terms, that two-year terms work. And I see that the, the three-year, I see the, the purpose of the three-year term and how it staggers and how many people come up for election. However, in the time, and I guess by some people in the audience here, I've been a short time with the city government, but it's been a pretty long number of years, and I've never seen it, the two-year terms, the way it is run, be a problem. And I think this last election, we happened to have, the way circumstances fell, we had five people running, but nothing changed. You know, so, so I just don't see anything wrong with the two-year terms, that's just my, and I don't have any language to substantiate it, other than, was it already in the charter?
I would echo part of what Renee said, I, I like the two-year terms. I think that it creates the level of accountability that I'm more comfortable with than a three-year term. And I understand the problem of the vacancies, but I'll just throw that in.
Mel?
I did a little research. I, I, I actually would, I think that for, for Jen's, I think that two-year terms is something that I would support. I understand, you know, Mark's rationale about stability and whatever, I, I can appreciate that, but I actually, I don't mind the, the ability to overthrow either. Hey, I don't, I don't have a problem with that. I think the, the people, you know, the, I, I was, I think that the elect, the electorate while, while they're, they'll make the decision for you. But anyway, just so that I didn't totally waste my time, I just want to let the city council know that there's nine cities in Vermont. The city of Barry has mayor and city council members all have two-year terms. The city of Burlington, mayor is a three-year term, councillors are two-year terms. Montpelier, all two-year terms. Newport, all two-year terms. Rutland, all two-year terms. St. Albans, two years for the mayor, three for councillors. The city of South Burlington, they don't have a mayor, all right? So, but they have three councilmen with three-year terms and two councilmen with two-year terms. Thought that was a little weird. City of Virgin's two-year terms, obviously. City of Wunuski, three-year term for the mayor and a two-year term for the councillor. So the only three-year, as you said, there's not a lot of three-year terms. So the only three-year, as you said, there's not a lot of three-year terms, so I'm, you know, I think it's, I don't know if it's always been this way with Virens, this three-year term, but I can tell you this, let me just say this. I don't know that there's ever been anybody that I have ever ran across that said, you know, I, I actually, I'm not, I don't want to run for a two-year term. If it was a three-year term, I'd run.
They could have thought the opposite.
Three years.
Yep, now this is one of those things, again, where it's like, well, I'll throw out the idea, I've got it.
Yeah, so Len, I have other comments about this section, not about what's there, but is, but what about is not there. As I understand this here, this proposal does away with the Board of Listers, does away with the Board of Auditors, and does away with the grand juror. And I'm, I'm cool with doing away with the grand juror. There's no, there's no statutory authority associated with that position. I think I watch just about every city council meeting. I watch them. I get bored with watching The Voice after a while. And anyway, I don't know that there's been any discussion amongst the city council about doing away with the Board of Listers, doing away with the Board of Auditors. And I do know that at least two of the listers were unaware that they were, that their job was being terminated, and there may have been all three of them. I don't know that anybody's been in touch with the auditors. I'm just a little surprised that the city council is proposing to do away with these boards, and I don't see, I don't, I haven't seen any discussion either amongst the city council members about that to any degree, and any discussion with the Board of Listers. And let me just, I know later on, it speaks about the city assessor. One of the reasons why I'm a little, I'm a little, why I bring this up, I mean, I like the Board of Listers. I used to, in essence, work for the Board of Listers when I worked for the city. I was really their administrative assistant, if you will. That's how we ran the system, hired, hired somebody else. It was extremely cost-effective. My concern, my concern is that if you do away with the Board of Listers and you're going to some assessor that you appoint, you know, I, I, I'm concerned about, you know, more employees and, you know, I'm just concerned with that, so.
I just said, I think it just got lost in the shuffle.
I don't think that was already intention to do that.
So you catching it, it's just that, this is, this is how stuff happens. We did, I did...
I was going to say, where are you, where are you finding this? Because I don't see it here because it's not there, right?
I don't think that was, there was no intent of trying to remove those boards. I think they just got lost in, in the editing.
The city of Winuski, because of the city of Winuski.
Well, no, but I also, I, it's, this is a lot of there, but we, there also is, I went back to ours and tried to piece in the pieces that were missing, and I just missed that one. But that's why I want other eyes, and I've been begging people to read this.
But later on, you have the ability to appoint an assessor or hire one, which would work in concert with the listers, hopefully. I mean, that's the way most, a lot of communities do it.
Yeah, because it keeps a local touch.
Exactly, yeah, yeah. And that's exactly why they're there, in my opinion.
That was just, take a look.
We will correct that before they public here.
Yep.
Is there anything else you think we missed in there? Mel?
I did intentionally get rid of the grand juror.
I, we, should the water commissioners be in? Should the, do they have to be in there, Joan, the representative of Virens Pan Water District? Is there anything else that is needed in there? I feel that, I feel that that is in our, I'm not sure if it, I think it's in our charter.
Not the water district.
Not in our charter?
No.
Okay. Just look at the existing language. If you, if you look at the existing, it's not about, yeah, the, you know, just look at it, that's all.
Okay, moving on. There's a lot to go here. We may not get through it all. Compensation for the mayor and the councillors?
Oh, that needs to be changed. The law says it'll be set by the auditors. Compensation for the council.
Really?
Yep. When a town does not fix the amount of compensation to be paid, such officers and town employees, the select board shall fix and determine the same, except as to their own pay, which shall be fixed by the auditors. That's Title 24, Section 933.
Yes?
So Joan is, Joan is correct, and that's why, you know, I think at one point, Joan, there was a time when I wasn't working for the city, that the city council gave itself a raise.
Yes, they did.
And I, and I, I was, whoa, 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 hold on, hold on. I wasn't working for the city at the time. Anyway, you know, it is okay, Joan, for the charter to say something different, all right? It's okay. You can, if you want, if you don't, if you don't have a Board of Auditors, all right, that would be a good example of why you would need something in your charter to deal with compensating yourself. So, you know, I'm, I'm not, you know, I'm not wild about having tons of stuff where you got to look at the state law and look at the, you know, look, and I can remember one time, for instance, the, you know, relative to the abatement of taxes, there's a statute that sets forth who's on the Board of Abatement, and it's comprised of the Board of Civil Authority and the Treasurer, whatever. The city's current charter says that the city council is the Board of Abatement. So you can see where, you know, if all of a sudden Joan decided they didn't have a Board of Abatement meeting, and if somebody only looks at the state law, they're actually got the wrong board making decisions. So those, you can have inconsistencies, but you want to be real careful.
I, I don't think the law allows it now because...
If it's in your charter, the charter shall prevail. I mean, if the legislature, if they approve your charter, the charter's, that is, that's the, that overrides that law if it's in there.
Okay.
So essentially, the legislature is giving exemption on the law that they created? That's the...
Sure, well, that's what a charter, any...
I just, the charter stood your...
Yeah.
Okay, so are we leaving it in?
Well, we're not doing anything other than correcting mistakes at this point.
Okay.
But, I didn't look at this in, in other charters, and it seems like the, at least the majority of the ones that I looked at, the compensation is actually set by a vote of the people.
Right.
So it can be proposed by the council or whatever, but the, it's the people will actually make the change.
Well, nobody runs for office then.
Well, budgets don't go to the city council at all. Okay. Repeat, look at again.
Okay, so this goes, the next one is, again, depends on if we do two years or three years. So I'm not sure...
What are we on, 303?
303.
303.
I, the only thing I suggested was deleting the, the words "and chair of the city's strategic planning committee."
And asked it, Mel, and asked it, Chen.
Didn't know we had one of those.
Yeah, well, that's, this is another one of those things that, throwing out there as...
It was in Winuski's.
It was in Winuski's, but I, I actually saw it. It's not just there because the question was, should we? Is there a reason that we would want to have something that is strategic planning in our charter that we have to do? And to, maybe it's just tying together all the different pieces to do this, or maybe it's a actual committee. So this wasn't an editing, I missed this, this was a, is this something that the city council should have a structure on so that we actually are forward-thinking as required by our charter, as opposed to when we just kind of forward-thinking as an ad hoc when we think about it? So, again, that's just discussion, but that's why I left that there.
Mel?
So, first off, if you were going to have, it's a thing in here about chair of the strategic planning committee, if you're going to have such a thing, then somebody needs to write a structure of what this thing is and what its duties and responsibilities are, number one. Number two, if it's in here, now you have a, a committee set forth in your charter, subject to the open meeting law, agendas, minutes, staff time, that's what it's talking about. If, if the mayor wants to have a task force, you know, go for it, go have one, you know, it's, it's okay. You don't need a task force in your, in your committee. So some of the things that Mark's talking about, those kinds of things can still happen, they can still happen, but it, but it isn't driven by something like this in your charter.
Can I make a recommendation? So we're not going to get into this whole thing?
No, we're not.
Now, I mean, Mel, Mel had a couple of more, a couple of substantive comments and, you know, and left. Rennie, you've had some comments. I don't know if maybe we should try and bring those up and have a discussion and try and get a direction on those while tonight, so that by the time we meet again, we might be able to clean up some of that stuff and agree on it.
I guess this is my only concern, and try to be fair, is we've seen the changes that they've recommended, but the other public peoples haven't seen them. There are several, some of its language, some of its spelling, some of its positions that got missed. So if we proceed as Bill said, please recognize the fact that we hope you'll come back to the public meeting, have time to review the whole charter as it's proposed, and if there's any changes. So I will go ahead and go to the ones that, sorry, that somebody has suggested. So the next one that's to be suggested is number 10 on page eight, with the addition of the city clerk, city assessor, the tree warden, and the elimination of the health Is there any other, oh, sorry.
Are you top?
Yeah, I'm not seeing it.
What page?
Page 10.
Mel, add on a number, add a number on council.
So just to expand on what I was doing with number 10 is, is the way that this proposal was originally written, it had a, a, a city clerk hired by the city manager and a city treasurer appointed by the city council. And again, I'm, I'm concerned with the administrative budget for the city of Virens. And when you have a position that's appointed by this person and appointed by this person, I see two people, and, you know, I'm concerned with that. And so that's the main, main reason why I put city clerk there. The city assessor, I, if, if you actually were going to do away, if you're going to do away with the Board of Listers, then I think that the city council should be appointing the assessor, not the city manager. But if you're not doing away with the Board of Listers, then you don't need a city assessor. You may need a professional, but you don't need an appointed city assessor. Tree warden just was signed out, just again. Relative to health officer, just so that you know, you don't appoint the health officer. You recommend the health officer, the Department of Health is who actually makes the appointment, and so it shouldn't be there. I'm actually a little surprised about the city of Winuski, but maybe the city of Winuski has health codes, health codes, and it makes, sets forth to be a health officer. But in Virens, you don't have, you don't have health and safety codes. You may, I mean, maybe somebody's got to do a word search in your ordinances, but anyway, just so you know, I was a health officer for many, many years. I wasn't appointed by the city council. I was recommended by the city council, appointed by the Department of Health.
Okay, and in number 12, it was suggested that we strike up water and before sewer commissioners.
Also, the first debate on taxes was added.
Okay, sorry. I didn't know there was a change. Moving on to 305. Let's see if there's anything. Council was changed to member of the council.
Fire department, which makes sense.
Yep. The appointment directly to, by the city manager is also crossed out. This is, is a member of fire department, may serve as, as a member on the council. So we might have a fireman sitting here one day.
A what?
A fireman.
You have?
Yeah.
Number nine.
Yeah, so we'll correct that.
Yep.
I see no changes that's been suggested until we get down to...
Substantive you're talking about.
Yeah, substantive, yes. City clerk of the council on 308.
Marini had a question on four.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
In my corporate office, if they skip three meetings without actually saying anything to anybody?
I mean, if someone is ill and I hope to be back, then I think that, then you would be excused.
Yeah, you would have said something to somebody. This is just disappearing. I will say that there was, there were been issues on other things I've been on where people just disappeared and you can't do anything about it. They're just gone. But you have no control of doing anything because they're still there. Like, so you have an empty seat, but it's not really empty, but you have to just wait until the election, and it's frustrating. So that was, but if others don't want to, that's good, but there was, I had a history with that kind of issue.
Well, it's either fit, they're automatically gone if they fail to attend, or they can be, you know, asked to.
I mean, somebody has a reason.
They can be voted off the island, too.
As long as they're talking to the manager, the mayor, or some other council member saying, hey, I can't make it because my kid broke out.
Yeah, I think we specifically said three consecutive meetings.
Without...
No contact, they need to go.
But if they just disappear, like, um...
Well, what if I didn't disappear, but just decided not to be on the council anymore? It would be easier.
Okay, we'll take that. To move along, we'll, we'll talk about that and change that perhaps. On 308, there was some crossouts, and it made it simply, "The city clerk or such other person as the city clerk made designated shall be the clerk of the council."
Yep.
I think that was a good change.
And also writing changed journal to record, which also is a good...
Okay, all right. So the next major change is in emergencies 403. There's a sentence that says, right, sort of in the last quarter of that page, emergency coordinate, last four members of the entire was...
The city assessor, yep.
Crossed out, the council shall be recommended.
The one to 402C, Rennie pulled out that it wasn't 30 days, it's 60 days by state law.
Okay.
See?
Yep. Should be a 60-day wait.
So if this isn't a formal public hearing, can these discuss revisions be incorporated in the draft for the next one?
Yes.
And all of this can be taken care of? That's what I, that's what I thought, okay.
Actually, I kind of like this because the type of thing it is, to have a work session, to kind of go through it, and then you can boil that down into something that you can actually put into a public hearing.
Right.
Yep.
Get rid of the stupid things that we missed, make some mistakes, give them something where there's discussion on a half dozen real issues. Yep.
Okay, 502.
We planned this.
There's just some language, some formal chapter 37 language that was put in. The city shall have, also have the following powers and duties.
I'm sorry, where is that?
502.
Yep, that made sense.
So we'll also correct that. And then if we go to F, submit to the council, and city treasurer was in there, that is crossed out, and city treasurer.
That made sense.
We'll correct that. Number J, act as collector of taxes. That was added.
Added it. Yep. Nothing, it just got missed.
And then there was some J K L I.
Reliterating.
Yes, reletting, done. That should be an L.
Quick question, backing up just a second.
Yep.
406, ordinance enforcement. Does this allow you, you get to determine what happens with a violation, with violation of zoning rights, right?
The Hill would come to us.
The bill would come to us.
No, I mean, whatever the enforcement is, the fines or how that goes about, whether it goes to court or whether it goes to traffic court or whatever, right?
Maybe the process is criminal action, defined by general office.
I think that that's what that says. 417 is, okay. Do you know whether you would have to adopt a separate ordinance to allow zoning violations to be brought to traffic court?
I don't, but we can find out.
Okay. Heads up.
Thank you. Okay, I'll show you my page, because there's a ton of crossouts. On page 20.
Which section?
C.
C.
CDE.
That whole section really has been crossed out right to the bottom. And Mel, if you want to explain why you're asking for that?
Sure. So, one of the things earlier, I made reference to the powers and duties of the city manager to be that as set forth in chapter 37 of title 24. So, that was really my, kind of the premise of why you really don't need all of this other, these other things, all right? Because title 37 gives the manager all kinds of authority. And I really think that one of the things that needs to be double-checked is, if you want to, if there's things in the state law that the city manager has the power and duty, and if you like them all, then you're good with those. If there's something in there that you don't like in the law, you might want to make reference that the manager does not have that. If there's something in that law that is missing that you want the city manager to do, then you want to include that. But I don't think that you want to have redundancy where you have, for instance, I'll give you an example. In title 37, the city manager appoints all of the police officers. The city manager appoints all of the members of the fire department. The way that Winuski put this thing together, in theory, what is this, is this saying that the manager is only appointing the police chief and not the rest of them? So, I think that this is a better way to handle it, a better way to handle it, because historically, this is really how it's been handled. I was not suggesting that we do away with, I wasn't suggesting here that we do away with a police chief and a fire chief, believe me. I'm saying it's up there and it's already up there.
Redundancy is bad.
Yeah, no, that makes sense.
Okay, again, we're going to speed along.
Rennie, you had a comment, I remember it, about 504. The last such vacancy shall be filled within a period of not to exceed 60 days. That may not be physically possible, I think.
Right, yeah.
And maybe that needs to be extended somewhat, or I don't know what definition we want in there. Or what? Or until filled? Fourth with.
So, we change exceed, dot to exceed, is what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Because look what happened to us last time. We got to the end and boom.
And Mark, can you check that?
Yep, I got it circled. Question me.
And Mel made some language changes.
In C.
To in 505, which made sense to clarify that language a little bit.
Sorry, somehow I missed your pages, Rennie. I don't mean to going over anything, so if you see something, say something.
Well, in 505, the only reason I changed is the way it's written, and some of the other charters have similar writing. It implies that if the manager's going on vacation or anyplace, that you need to have the acting manager fill in, and that's not so. And so, that's why I changed it to the other language that is also in the charters and in this charter about unable to perform the duties or disabled, that's when you kick in somebody else to do it.
Yeah, I wasn't thinking vacation for temporary absence, but you're entirely correct that did you interpret that.
The work session's going well. Let's see. So, 601C, Mel suggested to take out unpaid appointments. It's all appointments.
601, must be 602.
Oh, sorry, sorry. It is 602, sorry. Number C, take out unpaid appointments, any appointments.
Yep.
Okay. He also, on 603B, he suggested taking out personnel director as city manager. Okay, we've got that. Wherever it says personnel director, city manager. Is there anything else, Rennie, you had?
No, actually, this is one of the sections where, when I first looked at this, I thought it was really getting really picky and too nitty-gritty for a charter, which is kind of like a constitution for a community. And until I looked at some of the other charters, which were the same way, but it seems like this is dictating an awful lot about how personnel are handled when it should maybe just give some broader thing about, you know, shall use equality and selection and all of that stuff and leave it at that, not dictating the various things that they're going to do. That was just my thought. I didn't put it in my comments, but just for your consideration.
Just within 603, I think, or within...
603, yeah.
Okay, page 25, number 706. There were some changes on the council action on the budget. So, before the end of the fiscal year, the council shall adopt...
Which section you were in?
706.
706, okay.
The budget for the ensuing fiscal year with or without the amendment of the majority vote of the entire council.
So, I have a change in 704E. I don't know, it may be regarded as substantive.
Yeah, I think you're all, you far and I'm pretty sure, and I think you're correct.
Yeah, we did that.
I think there's an extra "the" in there.
And then, he struck out after estimated cash deficit, the remaining sentence.
Where are you now?
706.
The last sentence.
If you could explain, it would help. And the first adopted ensuing makes sense to me, but I wasn't sure what your point was for providing that no amendment. Just to explain to me, because when I get into seven, I was skating on thin knowledge, which is why I wanted people to specifically read like seven and eight, because this is, or seven at least, sorry.
Can you comment on that, Mel?
707?
706, the last sentence he struck. What was your reasoning?
I think that sentence belongs in a town where their voters deal with.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't, I think it's a micromanaging thing. I don't think you need it.
Public records approved is changed to adopted. That's fine. The next one, I'm going to let Mel answer to, 712, warrants for payment. There's a lot on that page 27 that was changed, you know, he had suggested changes, and you might as well explain them because there's a lot here you're explaining.
So, I did not make, first off, I want to just first, just a second, go back to 710. I did not suggest any changes there, but that does not necessarily mean that I don't have concerns with something. I get a little concerned with bureaucratic work programs and make-work type stuff, and I shouldn't necessarily pick on work programs, but, you know, the city of Regent's, if you just think about your employee base and what we do, you have a working police chief, you have a working public work supervisor, you've got a working wastewater superintendent, you know what I mean? These are what these people do. And when I read this about, you know, where people got to put together a work program by the month, you know, I think it's, there's something in here about in itself, set forth what they do per month. You know, I guess if that's the way you want to run the place, you know, where Jimmy is going to have to put together a work program identifying everything that they do and which month they do it in, you know, I just think, man, I tell you, I'd rather have them building sidewalk, to be honest with you. But that's just a general thought, that I wouldn't want to have the manager and the department heads being yanked over the carpet for not doing something that is in your charter, which really, it was over the top to begin with. So, just a little word of caution, is some of this excessive, maybe just fine for Winuski, all right? But it might not be just fine for Regent's. Let me just end there. Relative to the 12, let me just tell you that historically, the treasurer, correct me if I'm wrong, Joan, the treasurer deals with revenue, and the manager deals with expenses. And I took that out because it really, it really started making it look like the treasurer was doing jobs that really the manager has historically done.
Okay.
Now, I suppose that could change over time, depending on the complexity of the jobs.
Well, it's, yeah, it could, Bill. I just think that, I do think that the treasurer should be reporting to the city council, you know, I do agree with that, all right? But I can, I just, sometimes I, if it gets late at night, I just have this thing right out. If there is some things that you really think that the city treasurer should be reporting to you, then do that, you know, put it in here. But to be, this right here, that's city manager duty right there.
713, again, approved, was changed to adopted, and after the word budget was crossed out to, and all the way to the state highway taxes. Do you want to explain that?
I don't know what I'm hoping, to be honest with you.
Okay.
I think you adopt a budget, period. You don't need to put little things in there.
Okay. And then, Mel has suggested the taking out everything from 714 down to 716.
17.
Oh, I didn't flip the paper yet. 17, so...
Next classification is Winuski only, and I think that's...
Well, that's, so for, oh, the tax classification, yeah. And Rennie had 718, which actually you had an old copy, the tip was already gone. I had gotten.
What's that?
You had cut 718, but actually you were looking at an older version.
Oh, no.
I think you'd already cut that because I've got confirmation.
Oh, no, actually, I wanted to remove that yellow front, but I couldn't remove it.
Oh, but that, though, actually, the copy Mel has doesn't have that in it, because we had deleted that, and somehow you have a one step back.
Oh, okay.
But I had talked to Montpelier, and they said, yeah, tips are not relevant to us.
Okay, so trying to move on, so we can be done at 730. I don't, you're getting there.
718 is staying, the local option.
718 stays, yeah.
Yes.
It's one of the main reasons we're doing this.
What's that?
I think you said, oh, I'm sorry, 730. I didn't know.
We still have meetings to do here.
So, I'm assuming that we found out that we're not exempt from the charter change in order to go forward with a local option tax?
We weren't sure, and it didn't hurt to keep it in.
No, it doesn't hurt to keep it in there, for sure.
But I don't know that we've gotten confirmation when we're there.
So, there is a change in 801 that says the mayor, counselor officer. Okay?
Which section are you in again?
801.
And the only reason that was there is because we said earlier that the mayor is part of the council, so I didn't add it, but we can call it out just to be crystal clear.
The mayor is not a counselor.
Yeah, yes.
And I have no other changes unless Rennie had something that I didn't see.
No, I don't think I did.
So, Joan will put up on Front Porch Forum and the website and everything when the public hearing is going to be. Can we set that tonight?
That has to be set, but that's part of the other meeting.
That we can't have?
That we warned. No, the emergency portion of that we warned.
We'll end that, we can warn, or we end that meeting, come out of the second week, and then make a difference.
Yes, then we can deal with, you have to determine that you want to use the short-line version.
Concise summary.
Concise summary, because this is too much to print in the paper and everything. And once you determine that, that we want to use the concise summary, we'll set two public hearings, and when we put the ad in the paper, we have to list like the articles that are changing, and this is basically a rewrite or replacement, whatever. But you just have to generalize it. We wouldn't have to put every instance where it has changed from what we have.
Yes.
So, I really think that, you know, I mentioned an hour or so ago, how the city attorney is not involved with this, the city attorney should be. And, you know, Joan said a list of articles, the law says concise summary. It doesn't say list of articles, it doesn't say list of sections, it says concise summary. I'm not sure exactly what that means. But one of the things that I do know is that whenever you do have this vote, and if it gets approved, the city clerk shall certify that the city council and the municipality did everything in accordance with law.
The statute.
Okay? When it gets sent up to the state, all right?
Right.
So, it is critical that if the clerk is going to certify something, that indeed you're following the statute.
Right. That's why we're not using this as our first public hearing, because it didn't get warned properly. But I did call the Secretary of State's office, and he said listing the articles, as I did, all eight articles, would be acceptable as a concise summary.
Okay, I'd like to get that in writing. You should have that in writing.
Will say it, Joan.
Because I can tell you, that is not a concise summary in my mind legally. Number two.
He said because we classified that it was a city charter rewrite.
Yeah, it's okay. So, you've got a legal part out here that needs to be done. The other thing is, is and I think that it's great that this got posted on the city's website so that people can see it. You know, I, you know, keep in mind that when the voters come to vote, all right, what's, you know, it's important that voters know what they're voting on. And I don't know what this ballot is going to look like, but it's conceivable that this ballot could be about 60 pages long.
No, it's not. It's going to be exactly like the warning is in the paper.
It is in statute, and we have followed, we know what, we know how that's going to happen, because they do actually call out exactly, if you're going to have something that long, this is how you do it, so you don't have a 60-page ballot.
Okay. But the warning needs to be a concise summary, all right? And so, I think that we're talking about, we may be talking about two different things, and I'm just, it would be, I think it's, it would be embarrassing to go through this whole process.
Correct.
And send it up to Montpelier, and then, you know, have it found that really the clerk certified something that really didn't beat the law.
And as for having it reviewed by a lawyer, Will, I just didn't want to spend the time and money until we were actually going to do this.
Yeah.
And try and get rid of the junk that, I don't want to pay him $200 an hour to do type of...
Because Rennie and I, we work for free. Let me just say that, I know I'm working for free. I don't know what kind of a deal you got for free.
I think I purchased you my $700 stipend.
Okay, so I thank everybody very much for coming tonight. I appreciate all the comments. I think we're going to have a better offering to the public when it comes. We'll let you know when the next public hearing is. We'll put it on Front Porch Forum, it'll be on the website and everywhere else we can can get it, so that just pass the word, it's important to come. Everybody's voice is important, and we need to know how the city's feeling. Okay, we're not on our own on this.
Go ahead and email us before the next meeting if you have specific questions, issues, changes, so that we can have some heads up before the next meeting.
Oh, Sophie Donnelly, get over here.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. We need a motion to go back into executive session, please.
I will make said motion.
Inviting Peter.
Inviting Peter.
Thank you, Mel.
Thanks, Mel.
Bye, thanks.